Town of St. John Town Council Study Session for February 21st, 2024. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing. Yesterday was actually the anniversary for the falling officer of St. John James Laramore. And let's just have a moment of silence, please. Ms. Beth, if you could do the roll call, please.
Sure. Mike Bovat.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen is absent. Ann Oster.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas is absent. Gerald Swetts.
Here.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Item four to study session discussion items, Mr. Billy.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we can, we'd like to move items G and N to the top of the meeting. Andy and Phil are available but have a call at 11:00, so we'd like to get them on first.
That'd be fine. And this is the Baker-Tilly Annual Disclosure Bond Agreement and the 2024 General Obligation and Economic Development Revenue Bonds.
Yes. So, the annual bond engagement is our agreement for them to disclose information about our civil bonds.
Very good.
And then, are they both on?
Yeah, hold on to call, but we just dropped off this video. I don't have my microphone on.
So, when they jump on, they will present to us the 2024 General Obligation Bond that we're looking to go out and do see some extra road paving and projects. And then, do we have them on? Okay, Phil's on. Phil, can you hear us?
This is Andy. I'm on. I was only able to join via phone for some reason, but I am on. If you can hear me okay.
Yes, you can hear.
Jerry, can you hear?
Yes.
So, I guess I could present quickly a little bit about the GO bond while they're looking at the sound. So, the town is looking to potentially go out for a 2024 Series GO bond. This would be to complete various different road paving projects and improvements. As we were taking a look at the various different projects coming up, like NERPC is one thing you guys are going to have to be prepared to match. 20% will be the town's match and 80% comes from federal funding. And the last that we had heard, the estimate was somewhere around, and this is for that client extension project, the estimate we heard was around a $12 million project. So, our match would be around 2.4 million. To date, that hasn't been contemplated on how we will fund that match. So, we've been doing a little work on how to accomplish all of your goals to make sure that road paving projects and road improvements are continuing at a substantial rate and making sure that that match is taken care of. And so, we were taking a look at this GO bond with Baker-Tilly and Barnes &amp; Thornburg. I don't know if...Andy, are you on?
Yep.
Okay. If you want to pick up anything from where I left off.
Yes, and Beth I'm on as well. It's Phil. I had to join via phone. I couldn't get the audio to work.
Okay. So, I just basically talked briefly about...
This is Andy. I'm on via phone as well. I was...okay.
That's good. Yeah. Go ahead. We're good.
Right. Okay. So, Andy, I don't know. Do you want to chat about the parameters of the bond? And then, we could...
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
So, as Beth mentioned, we were asked to take a look at potential bonding for road and paving projects. And then, also keeping in mind, obviously, there may be additional projects that the town would want to consider in the future as well. So, we had looked at your outstanding debt profile and existing obligations that are paid from a property tax and had really looked at the ability of the town to issue new debt, at least on a tax rate neutral basis or better. And there's a couple of different things that have created capacity for the town. One of those is that you do have an existing 2013 bond issuance, and that 2013 bond issuance is nearing the end of its life. So, your final payments on the 2013 bonds will be paid from a 2025 property tax levy with a final bond payment in February of 2026. So, as those bonds go away, that gives you the ability to wrap existing debt behind it without increasing what you're having to levy for debt service on an annual pay. The town's also seen quite a bit of growth from an assessed value perspective over the last few years. And as assessed values go up, that pushes tax rates down. And we've seen, in the last five years alone, the town tax rates decreased by over six, close to seven cents. So, really, what you have the ability to do here would be to issue a new general obligation bond for these paving needs. It would essentially wrap behind that 2013 issuance that's paid off here in the next year or two. And I think doing that would not only give you capacity to do additional projects in the future, but just with the paving bonds coming on behind the 2013 bond, it should actually decrease what you've got in debt service going forward fairly significantly. So, like I said, it keeps...it gives you the ability to issue for additional road and paving projects without any tax rate impact and also making sure that we preserve capacity for future projects as well. As far as parameters, we would anticipate a 10-year repayment. You've got flexibility to pay a bond of this type off within a 20-year period, but we would anticipate about a 10-year repayment, which again would keep those payments at a manageable level and also give you capacity for additional projects as well. So, it's kind of a quick overview, but I would certainly be glad to answer any questions you might have on it.
Sounds good to me. And when do you think that we would be able to move forward on that, do you think? You'd have to wait till February of '26? Or how exactly would that work?
So, what we could actually do, and I'll let Phil speak to the timetable, but you could start the process really here soon and be in a position to issue bonds by the summer. And then, essentially, what we would do is structure the bond repayment so you would have kind of a small payment that would come online in 2025 as your 2013 bonds start to go away, and then the majority of the bond payments would pick up in 2026. So, it would actually give you the ability to issue that debt here in 2024, but then the majority of the repayment would kick in in 2025 and then kick in at its full pace in 2026.
Understand. Thank you.
And this is Phil Fasano speaking. So, in terms of...we put together a draft timetable, and part of the reason we're talking today is we would have potentially a first reading of a bond ordinance next week at your council meeting next week. And would proceed to...with a GO bond, there isn't...it's one of the, I will say, the least amount of process in bonding in Indiana. A general obligation bond is the most straightforward type. And so, we would have two readings of a bond ordinance. We'd have an additional appropriation ordinance that would go with it. We'd give a public notice, newspaper notice of additional appropriation, public hearing. The second reading of both ordinances would occur under our current timing. If the council chooses to move forward, it would be at your March meeting that we would have second reading and approval. And we have to take some...provide some additional notifications, et cetera, with regard to the issuance of the bonds and have a...then we have to proceed to sell the bonds, which includes an offering document called an official statement. And the town can decide whether, with Andy's help and et cetera, whether it pursues a rating. The town's been rated before, whether it pursues a rating for the bonds in order to help the marketability of the bonds. Then, we would proceed to sell it. And as Andy mentioned, on the current timetable, you could be selling the bond by sometime in early June.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you for that input. Thank you, Andy.
Sure. Yep.
Excuse me. Is there a dollar amount on this bond that we're looking at? I don't know if we mentioned that or not.
Well, not to exceed 6 million.
So, currently, the...not to exceed 6 million is the number we're operating with. Yep.
Any other questions from anyone? Jerry, anything else? Billy?
No.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that insight and that clarity for that gentleman.
Any other questions on...
I don't think so. I think we're clear. I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Appreciate you speaking out.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to...
We'd certainly be glad if that's helpful to attend virtually or in person at the next couple of months' meetings.
Mr. President, also, I moved up the other portion of the EDA.
Okay. Which one is that, Billy?
It was on the letter N. It was the second portion of it.
Okay, so he's going to speak to that then.
No, I'm sorry.
So, on item N, did you guys have input on that for the 2024 General Obligation and Economic Development Revenue Bonds?
I'm sorry. I think...I don't have your agenda in front of me, so I'm sorry. I don't know what the item reads.
I'm sorry, Andy. I thought you would think...Mr. Kill is here to present his presentation. Mike.
Okay. So, is this still part of the bond issue thing that we're...or is this two separate bond issues? These are two separate bond issues. So, where was this on the agenda? This was not N that we just discussed?
So, it was G?
It was G. It was G. Baker-Tilly.
No, that's the disclosure. Here it is.
Okay.
Economic Development Revenue Bonds.
Okay. All right. Sorry. I just...all right.
Mr. Kill?
Yes, thank you. I think Phil and Andy, just for clarification, since you don't have the agenda, what it is, it's EDA 1, EDA 2, then eventually EDA 3 in the various allocation areas that are going to be in each one. So, I think that's what they're asking, the two of you. And if you would like, I mean, I can certainly speak to that. I worked with the TIF districts in the community for a long, long time. So, I do have fairly intimate knowledge of everything, yes. So, as you guys will recall, the Commons was created last year, the year before. So, that's a separate economic development area on its own, so that's already taken care of. As far as EDA 1 goes, there's going to have to be...when you establish an economic development area or you reestablish it, it's basically the same process. So, that's what's going to have to happen. But then, there has to be some identification of a lot of parcel numbers. There has to be certain allocation areas carved out of each economic development area. When you speak of EDA 1, that, in essence, TIF district, that's the US 41 corridor. EDA 2 is the 231 corridor. So, just so everybody kind of has their bearings on where it's at. So, each one of them is going to require some work be done, obviously, for taking those two economic development areas and creating different allocation areas in one. In 2021, I believe, the town council created an age-restricted area, for example. That's an allocation area. There's a commercial area on 231 that you all want to just see really nice commercial built in. That would be another allocation area. There's a couple residential areas. Those would be allocation areas. So, the work that needs to be done, that's what this agenda item speaks to. Andy Mauser has an incredible amount of work to do with regard to parcel numbers to make sure tax collections are done correctly in these two TIF districts. So, that's one of Andy's roles, as well as running, obviously, schedules and things of that nature. Phil's role will then be to reestablish these districts and create these allocation areas for you so that you can move forward from this point. That's the general overview of everything unless Phil or Andy have something else they want to add. That's in the general overview. And if any of you have any questions, obviously, it can be answered real quick here.
And so, Mr. President, everyone else, we are working with Andy to identify, to make sure all the parcels were added incorrectly and moving forward to make sure that nothing was missed and some monies that weren't being collected are going to start being collected.
Okay.
Obviously, very important.
Yeah. I have an update for you very soon on that. It's just a lot of information that we're going through.
So, how many districts do we have along 231 by the gates? I mean, is the age-restricted TIF that was created in the south side of 231, are those two different ones or is it all part of one?
Well, you know what, Jerry? I think that's where there's a lot of confusion. There is nothing that's called a TIF district. It's called an economic development area. The TIF districts are within those. But because everybody doesn't really understand the EDA, you just refer to them as TIFs. But so, basically, you have the US 41. You have a giant TIF district there. You have a giant TIF district on 231. Then, you want to create another giant TIF district along Klein Avenue. So, that would be an EDA 3.
On Klein or Calumet?
Right.
Well, no, no, no. Calumet's the Commons. That's what that's called. This would be...you've got EDA 1, EDA 2, and then an EDA 3. Within the second economic development area, you have going to be like four allocation areas in there. So, each allocation area will stand on their own with regard to a project. So, for example, when all the commercial development starts coming in and be considered, that will be on its own allocation area. So, then, the town can look at that, and they know that it won't be interco-mingled with any of the different areas in TIF 2, if you will. So, that's what...and Andy, right now, is going to be reviewing what the county auditor has as far as their parcel numbers and the actual increment that's collected for the town.
So, because it's in the economic development area, doesn't necessarily mean it's in a TIF? Or is it part of the TIF?
Well, it's EDA 2. So, what we're going to do, or what the town is going to do, is create those TIF districts in EDA 2.
Okay.
Allocation areas, if you will. So, that's the whole...that's kind of what's going to happen in EDA 2.
Okay.
Actually, that kind of, exactly.
Okay. Well, that's helpful.
So, I think the only thing that you guys are being asked to do at your next meeting is there are two engagement letters from Barnes &amp; Thornburg, one for the GO bond that was just discussed for road paving and various road improvement projects. And the second engagement letter is to begin this work on the parcel numbers and identifying the EDAs and reallocating or allocating TIF areas and all of that good stuff. So, it's two different engagement letters. And then, the Baker-Tilly one that kind of got clumped in, that was just for your annual bond disclosures. That's required by law. The water board does their own. The sanitary district does their own. And then, the civil or the town board has to disclose on their own. So, it's three separate agreements you're going to be looking at for your next meeting.
Okay. So, is there a dollar amount on this project? That what's going to...
Well, I think that's what we're trying to identify. We want to quantify everything, so...
So, the engagement letter is to come up with an estimate or to do the job?
The engagement letter, the way I would understand, at this point of the process, is to, in essence, reestablish the districts. Create the allocation areas, get the parcel numbers straightened out, make sure the increment's going to be collected. Then, from that point, that's when you get into the actual, any bonding or anything like that. This is simply to start creating that, those areas and get it cleaned up.
So, do we have an estimate what that's going to cost, I guess, is my question?
It's just...
Phil?
Yeah, it's just on our engagement. Okay, so typically, we are not certain what it is, what it's going to cost. We do promise to give you...the reason why we use the language we use, I mean, you saw that in the GO bond, if you saw the GO bond engagement letter, we have a range of costs because we're pretty certain what that is and that we feel we can give you an estimated fee. In this case, it's more difficult because we're not quite sure all of what is involved. So, what we promise to do is, as we progress, before we would proceed to go ahead and issue any bonds or what have you, we would provide you with fixed fee at that point. Like, we would just keep our time. We won't be billing, but we would keep our time and we would provide you with fixed fee at that later date, once we have a better handle around what we're doing. Because we're not certain what that is at this point.
Jerry, it's the same design as Commons because I asked the same question when you guys signed that engagement letter, like, what's it going to cost?
Right.
And it was just sort of on an as-needed basis. I can tell you, for Commons, it was $72,000. That's what the amount ended up being for work, but there was no actual amount listed in the engagement letter for the reasons Phil listed.
Okay.
Jerry, it's kind of the same process. Every one of these you do. So, it's not a non-common thing.
But it sounded like we're doing more now? Or you're just reevaluating what was already done?
No, no. There's definitely going to be more, yes.
So, the expansion...
For the town, yes.
Expansion in the Gates area.
Well, it's going to include...there's sections that are already in EDA 2, but they're not carved into different allocation areas.
I understand.
That's what Phil and Andy are going to be working on. Then, if there's any bond issues, at that time, what Phil said, then all of the areas will be established. It'll be a known what's going on, and then, at that time, he's going to give you a hard number.
Okay. I do have one more question unless anybody else has something. So, you're here today addressing us because you have knowledge of what was going on in the past as an advisor, or are you working for a company?
Well, no. Obviously, I work for Mr. Latton. I mean, that's...
I know who you work for.
Yeah, so...
Your representation here today...
Is just to answer questions as it relates to the EDAs in the community and EDA 2 because obviously I have intimate knowledge of all these areas. So, it was kind of...the thought was, hey, maybe I should come here in case there's any questions because this stuff goes way back. And nobody really has any knowledge of that. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what EDAs we are talking about, yeah.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify...
Yeah, I'm not working as a consultant for you, no.
Well, you're here because you've got knowledge of, to share that knowledge.
Correct.
Not because you're trying to get business from the town and to do something necessarily.
Oh, I mean, these areas that are in the Gates, we will be, obviously, we're going to be petitioning the town for a commercial project. So, at some point, yes, we are going to come forward with that.
Yeah, no, but that's...yeah.
Not right now, we're not doing that, but that is going to be in the future. You can...
No, I understand that.
You will definitely get to see me again in the future, I promise.
Well, lucky us.
If that's what you were asking, yes, the answer is...
No, I just want to know this particular project, if you had some interest in there or just sharing some knowledge because you knew all what has gone on in the past.
Well, I'm sharing knowledge, but also, there's an interest because we have the commercial property along 231. We're going to be bringing that forward. We have all the other property in the Gates of St. John. There's the East Gates. There's all of that, but that's not necessarily just for us.
Right.
But we are going to be bringing projects forward, yes.
Yeah.
So, just so you know, in the future, that will happen.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I kind of had a question because, Jerry, you're really the only one here from previous. So, you kind of, when you asked, and I don't know, did you guys quantify or did you guys go through this process of looking at 231? Had you guys done anything with that?
With some of it, but not to the extent that he's talking about, not longer term than that. No, we didn't go all the way because we had no idea where the ownership was and exactly what was going to be part of because we didn't want to make the TIF bigger than you need to because then you're losing tax dollars on the other end.
Right.
So, no, there's more work to be done as expansion grows and as they determine how they want to expand and what they're going to expand at, it needs to be improved.
Okay. And I want to thank the town manager, Billy, for bringing us to the forefront and clarifying this because, obviously, without quantifying this, the town is kind of at an impasse. We wouldn't really be able to proceed forward with these types of projects. Would that be a true statement?
Well, it's extremely difficult without any, obviously, background knowledge from 2004 forward. So, it is tough, but just...basically, just so everybody knows, the whole point of this is to make sure that there is revenue generated for the community. Okay? That's the whole point. And also, to make sure that you have the ability that if, when commercial comes in, you have a designated allocation area where if you wanted to issue some debt for that or provide a developer incentive, not necessarily us, we're not commercial people, but in the future, you have those options. Those are available to the town. So, the whole point is to make them available to everybody, you know, the council, I mean, all the council members. So, it obviously needs to be cleaned up. So, that's...like Jerry said, we kind of know we have a roadmap now on where we'd like to go. This is the first step of being able to present something to you.
I think it would be helpful if the council could get a map of exactly what's designated in economic areas and also TIFs.
EDA 1, EDA 2, and then the future...
Especially in the areas of Calumet Avenue are the Commons and also by the Gates.
I agree.
Because that's where there's going to be a lot of growth and a lot of expansion that needs to be looked at. To know where you're starting, I think, is important. So, if we could get those documents, that would be nice to have.
You know, if you all would like, I will...I can assist in that. Obviously, I can assist in that regard if you would like. I'm offering that assistance.
I would like that.
Then, you'll have an accurate map of knowing where each EDA is and the boundaries of it.
So, I mean, I have that, but I think it's important that they have that as well.
No.
I can make sure that gets forwarded over.
I can make sure that gets forwarded over.
Probably blow one out, hang it on the wall so it could be a reference when the town manager's office or whatever. So if we need a reference quickly, we can always have one.
Well, the accurate maps are obviously extremely important, and you want a map that actually shows the Commons, EDA one, EDA two, all that. So it is important to have that, obviously.
And then to Andy and them, like, how long do you think it, time-wise, what do you think it takes to identify and kind of move through this? What would you see time-wise?
Sure. And I can, maybe just for a little bit of background, sorry, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay. Just for a little bit of background, on the redevelopment side, we did work with the town a couple of years ago for about a two-year period, I think it was around twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So we do have some, you know, experience with the existing TIF areas and then the new allocation areas that would be created. You know, as we've started to get more involved here early in twenty twenty-four, I think there's kind of two issues at hand, kind of two things we're looking into. One is the existing TIF areas and, you know, as they were intended to be set up and those boundaries, you know, that have been set up over the past several decades. One thing we are working with is verifying with the county that the way that the county tracks those areas is consistent with how the areas were set up. And that's something, you know, we see around the state sometimes that areas either, you know, maybe are, they're just inconsistencies in the boundaries when they're set up or as areas age, parcels may be, you know, drop out, you know, as the software changes, things like that. So we've, we've started working to try and make sure that all the areas that have, you know, been set up over the past couple of decades are accurately set up because it's really how the county and the county auditor's office, especially, you know, specifically how they track those areas, is how the TIF is calculated and distributed. So that's something we're we're working on. I think we've got a pretty good handle on maybe where there's some corrections that need to be made. But I think that's something, you know, we can get resolved here in the next few months and definitely by the summer when the county will need to certify TIF for twenty twenty-five. So that's something we're working through. And then I think the second piece will be, you know, some of these additional developments, you know, possibly coming online, looking at new TIF allocation areas that would need to be created. And I'll let maybe Phil speak to the timing on that, but that's, you know, typically something that can be done in about a month or or two-month timetable as far as establishing new allocation areas. Yeah, let me, let me talk to that for a second. We, we scratched together for Beth and and Joe, et cetera, and Bill, Billy, to just to show what we thought would be a possible planning calendar. As Steve mentioned, there's a lot of work to be done on the front end. So we were thinking that we might be able to start the process, the public process of establishing new TIF areas, carving out areas that we would need for some of these projects and some of the bond financing that the town has been talking about. And we were hopeful maybe to to start with a redevelopment commission meeting in April, late April, the redevelopment commission, I believe, meets on the twenty-fourth of April. So we were hoping that that would be sort of our kickoff to to the calendar, if you will, for the re-establishment. And there are several steps, statutory steps, that some of you I know are familiar with. From there, you go for the redevelopment commission, you go to the planning commission, you come back to the town council, you provide a public, a noticeable public hearing, and then you come back to the redevelopment commission. And and that last step, but the redevelopment commission together with a public hearing, you know, that that could take place either in, I believe we had that for either May or June, and then from there, we could take actions with regard to the financings. And what we would do as well is the financing steps under Indiana law for what you would call TIF bonds, if you're familiar with the TIF bonds, the reason for separating the areas is to be able to pledge the TIF that is created from those areas towards particular project TIF bonds. And that's a different statutory, it comes out of a different statute in Indiana law. So there's the, there's the, there's the redevelopment side, which is, as Steve mentioned, establishing new areas, and then there's the bond financing side. But we can take some of those steps, we can mix them in and do them at the same time. So, you know, the the calendar would proceed forward and maybe we would have some of these, get our areas established and maybe do some of the bond steps to be able to to issue bonds, you know, sometime in July or or August.
Okay, well, that's helpful.
And so just so everybody knows, when when we come forward, and like I said, we'll come forward here shortly in the future, any proposal that we would make for development in the two thirty-one corridor there, we would not ask the town to do anything, we would only ask that it would be developer bought bonds. So meaning if things didn't happen or things never occurred, and you're familiar with that, Jerry, you know, because you just did one for Commons, you don't get paid, there's no risk to the community. So there's nothing we're going to present that's not a developer bought bond, just so you know, for any commercial or residential or anything. And, you know, just I want to make sure that's clear, just so everybody knows that upfront. Sorry, Phil, I just figured we'd throw that in there just so, because you're mentioning bonds, so.
No, no, no. It's a good statement to make. No, it's not, these are, right, these are, the bonds that are contemplated by these, unlike the general obligation bonds we talked about earlier in the agenda, these bonds are not tax-backed bonds. They are developer purchase bonds to which TIF is pledged, and if TIF is insufficient, you know, they, the the bonds are only payable from TIF, not from any tax from the from the town. No geo, no geo tax, no special benefits tax of any kind, there's not, there's, it, the, it's the, the repayment of the bonds is based on the new property taxes that are generated, and and that is what serves as, Andy will do an estimate of what size bond can be afforded based on the estimated property taxes, and that's what will pay the bond, and only that will pay the bond.
And Phil, this is identical to the Commons bond that was just issued, correct?
Right, the Commons bond is identical in terms of structure, identical in terms of structure.
So that's kind of helpful for everybody, especially Jerry, you were here when that was issued, so you know what that process is then. Okay.
Now, I just want to correct one thing I said. I, I, I was realizing that I, I was fumbling a little bit for the timetable, to perform a timetable that we had prepared, which was just a draft to get some idea. Again, we would, we would still start in April, but it would be likely that we'd go to the redevelopment mission in July. So so that was, that was the timing, and then maybe bonds thereafter, late July, still what I had told you before, late July, early August, something like that.
Okay, appreciate that, Phil. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we appreciate that, thank you so much, we're going to move forward in our agenda here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate it, okay? Thank you, bye-bye.
Going back up to A, shared ethics commission discussion.
So, Lucille wouldn't be able to make it today. She did come into the meeting and ask for two representatives from the town, one being the delegate. That would be our clerk treasurer, that's how it is in every other town from what she, what she made, when she made her comments to me. And then the other would have to be a resident, not an elected official. After that meeting where she presented it, I received two phone calls, one from a Kyle Burton and the other from Greg Wigorsky. Kyle Burton unfortunately is a dire resident, so he was out of the running. So on the next agenda, it will be Greg Wigorsky on there for commissioner to to attend meetings and bring back any other information from the ethic commission.
That's the only one that's.
That's the only person that's reached out for that.
All right. Anything else on the ethics? With that, we'll move to B, presentation for payroll software presented by Paycom. Good morning.
Can anyone hear me? Harlan and I are going to have to change the microphone back and forth because we have drastically different heights. But good morning, I'm happy to be here today, we've been working with your team for a little bit now. So in the changing of your payroll software, we've met with many people on your teams, multiple departments, everything like that, and everybody's pretty excited about making the change and for what it'll do for the organization. So first is who is Paycom? We are the only HRS system in the space to function on a true database, true single database platform, single source of information, single, one app, one architecture, one platform where your employees and your managers will be accessing all of their information and HR needs and payroll needs. So employee-led strategy, employees transfer and confirm all of their own data, all parts of the payroll process that guarantee them perfect paychecks every time, on-time paychecks every time, and overall it'll empower all of your employees. Only HRS to provide the ability for employees to view and correct and approve all of their information previous to paychecks being run. And we have thirty-seven thousand clients across the US and internationally. So we took a look at your current environment for how you guys are actually getting to the point of processing your payroll. So Harlan's going to speak a little bit more onto this as well.
Yeah, Dan, thank you for having us. We had the opportunity to connect with your different department leads, obviously Beth, Katie, Bill, Jesse, and some of the administrative and backend processes. And what we found and identified along with all of them is that it's currently, for lack of a better word, kind of a mess from both the the manager and employee in terms of time card approval, accessing their information, employee status change and management, it's very paper-driven, manual, and prone for inefficiencies and errors. So what Paycom is proposing is a very simple intuitive intuitive tool for your employees and for your managers to access and make their day-to-day changes and needs all through our system, all through our app, which will handle really everything from the employee lifecycle. We did, I'll let Julia take it back over, but we we kind of hit on some impacts, some business impacts, we put it into three or four different buckets that we'll walk through at a very high level in terms of how this is going to impact all of the employees for the town of St. John.
Okay, so state-of-the-art technology, so like Harlan said as well, we are an intuitive system, but also state-of-the-art technology, newest technology on the market, we're constantly updating as well. So your current process, for your guys' knowledge, is pretty antiquated, like Harlan touched on, your time and attendance system is sunsetting, so it will no longer be able to be coded, your employees will no longer really be able to access this or your administrators access this. Your information's not in real time, and it doesn't accommodate all departments. So your departments right now, a lot of them have different structures for how they're handling anything HR, time and attendance related. So what Paycom will do for the organization or your organization is have employees log their own time and attendance, have employees transfer their own information into the system, and then everything will be routed to managers or administrators or the appropriate party for any type of approvals. All of your information will be in live time, so it'll be correct data all the time. And your applications, your application per allocation for your department, so because every department has different rules or different structure for what you guys are doing, depending on if it's fire, police, or public works or anything like that, Paycom system will be able to accommodate for those different allocations. So your organizational impact for the town of St. John, again, all of your employees will be connected to the technology. You'll have a uniform process, and overall, it'll save about sixteen hours of even just processing time within your payroll a month. When we met with your payroll team, we were informed that it takes about eight hours or a whole day to actually process your payroll.
So, and just to add on to that, that's not, that doesn't even quantify the the time saved for your different, like, managers and department leaders in terms of the time that they spend on this process. So yes, we're going to be giving time and hours back into, you know, the payroll and administrative department, but we're really going to be putting the time back into the department leaders as well. We just didn't quantify that here. And then going back to that allocation piece, we will be able to then ultimately, like, track grants and any funding to any projects as well through that time and attendance software for better, you know, reporting and visibility too.
So decreasing your administrative burden, your administrators and managers spend hours and days collecting, verifying information for and from your employees, so often tracking employees down if employees are absent for a day, if they're on PTO, if they're sick or anything like that, that information is delayed and then therefore delayed getting entered into the system. It has to be entered either by the manager or by somebody in payroll or in the administrative team. What Paycom will do is connect your employees directly to the system. So even if somebody's on PTO, even if somebody's sick, anything like that, they will still be responsible for having updated information, updated time and attendance, anything that goes into the system. Your employees will be responsible for their own data, and because nobody knows their information better than yourself, so your employees will be doing that into the system. And then even from an organizational impact for you guys, even from just like in onboarding standpoint, you guys hired fourteen people in January, so congratulations to your new hires. But meeting with your administrative team, it takes about two hours per employee to get them fully onboarded. So even in the month of January, that's about twenty-eight hours spent on onboarding. There's a lot of processing snags and ultimately eliminating all of that manual data entry into the system. So once your employees come in, for this example, specifically, they can start on day one, and they're not spending hours with that paperwork.
And and to add on a little bit on that, too, it's also reducing much of the, like, the compliance risks as well. For example, I nine, it's ensuring that the I nine or the W four is filled out correctly, and we have the most up-to-date version, and we're auditing that as well to ensure you all are in compliance on that piece.
So increasing your data integrity and eliminating your liability, kind of piggybacking even of what Harlan just said, your administrative team's constantly checking this information. So whether it is new employees or employees that are already existing, have been here for years, in their documents, their time and attendance, their paychecks, anything like that, your administrative team spends days and hours making sure that this is correct so that you guys as a town are paying your employees correctly and on time when it comes all the way down to it. So again, the Paycom solution is to have your employees responsible for this information to make sure that it is correct, that it is in on time, and to confirm that all their paychecks are correct once that that payroll actually runs. For your organization, this would mean your administrators and managers no longer spend time on this verification process. So again, it's a lot of back and forths usually with your administrators tracking employees down, making sure that they are verifying it, and they are actually the ones that are verifying the information. And then also because a lot of your processes are paper, there can be like things that are either fudged or can't be read or anything like that. So that again is a process of that kind of cat and mouse back and forth game, so then empowering all of your employees to make sure that their information's correct and it's in the system and everything is running appropriately. And then lastly, high security and protection of your data. So what we've seen a lot of times with organizations and yours also is that when you have this paper processing, manual data entry, things like that, your changes can get corrupted by human error, I mean, we all are only human. And it also goes back to just making sure that or having your administrative team make sure that everything is perfect. So it causes a lot of time consumption and then also the possibility of having your data be corrupted by your current processes. So what Paycom does is make sure that all of your information is completely accurate and that your employees are, again, confirming this information that they put in, it's not going to another person, to another person, to then be put into the system to possibly incorrect and possibly lead to an incorrect paycheck or a delayed paycheck. So having your employees connected to the system will drastically decrease any of that potential for human error. On your organization, this will mean, again, that your data will never really run that risk of being corrupted and that your employees. risk of being corrupted, and that your employees have high trust in the system and in the HR team and in the organization as a whole, especially if they're always being paid correctly and on time by our software. So how we're gonna make this happen, the team behind the strategy, so actually making a transition to Paycom and what this looks like. So starting with myself, I'm not sure if I actually even introduced myself. My name is Julia Briano, and I am your representative for this area. I cover the entire Northwest Indiana Territory and a little bit of the Chicago South Side as well. And then Harlan is our Chicagoland Sales Manager. Followed by that will be your transition team. So I will stay with you during this transition. I'll be a little bit of, I guess you can say, like, your coach or commissioner. And then your transition specialist representative will be like the quarterback to the project. So this is the person that is the project manager, as you could say. So they will serve as your project lead in actually getting the system built out for your, what your information is, pulling that data, building out what you would see, all of your information within the Paycom system. And then they'll lead you through all of the trainings, train your managers, train your employees, anything that you guys would need. With this, you'll also have your new client setup specialist, so your NCS specialist. They are your primary contact for anything like GL-related, anything that is a little bit more specific to your processes as an organization. You'll have your, any type of coordinator, specific ADI coordinator that you would possibly need in the future. And then, once you deem your transition successful, so we won't transition to you into long-term client support until you guys deem the transition successful. After that, you will have your dedicated Paycom specialist and your client relations representative, which you could think about these two more as like a day-to-day person that you would have any questions to, and then somebody that'll work with you long-term, be your representative in case there's anything else that you want to build out within the platform. I don't go anywhere, I sit in Chicago, so if any, if you guys ever need me during this transition, first of all, I'll be with you during the transition, and your partnership with Paycom, I will always be around. I'm gonna hand it off to Harlan to show you how we actually, the steps to our delivery approach.
Yeah, we don't, I'm assuming you all don't wanna get into the nitty-gritty of the implementation, but from a high level, we have a data extraction team that will be pulling the data out of your current systems and processes and standing that up within Paycom. And then we have a team that will work to configure it, test it, ensure that it's accurate and valid, will obviously work with the administrative team to confirm the validity and the accuracy of the data as well. The majority of the time or the burden is really training. It's ensuring that Beth, Katie, Jesse, everyone knows how to leverage the system, but we actually take it a step further as well. And we train all department leaders, all supervisors, and all employees on how to interact with and engage with the technology. They know how to clock in and clock out. They know how to access the documents that we send out to them. And we ensure that they do have all of that knowledge. We structure and tailor the training around your all's specific needs. We would do both virtual as well as in-person trainings. Here, I can actually go through how we roll this out. We can do in-person, virtual trainings, have what we call office hours for any employees that are maybe struggling to catch on. There's webcasts, there's webinars, there's a lot of different resources available to ensure that everyone understands what's coming. We help with the communication and the rollout, get everyone all jazzed up about the payroll conversion, and then we take it from there. In terms of an implementation, or I'm sorry, formalizing a partnership, and we've walked through much of this with Bill, it's very easy. We're actually a non-contractual provider, meaning you are free to leave Paycom at any time. It is a very cheesy slogan, but we say we look to aim your business on every payroll. But any questions, thoughts, feedback that we can answer at this time?
I just have a quick question. So ultimately, people are signing in and out on an app? Is that how it works?
Correct. So either like a mobile app, like your banking app, or Facebook on their phone, or otherwise we're obviously available on the web for employees to access their information. We can set parameters and controls up so that they only have visibility into what you would want them to see and have access to, as well as they can only access things where you want them to have access to. So for example, clocking in and out is always a question of like, well, I don't want somebody, if they do anything from their phone, we don't want them doing it from bed, or from a beach, or whatever it might be. We can set parameters so that we're ensuring that they are onsite within that, like, geolocation or connected to the Wi-Fi, so that they only have access to that at the designated area.
And for us, like Public Works, for example, they clock in on an old, you know, punch-in and punch-out. And then, just to give you a little background of how payroll currently works, so they come in, clock in, clock out. Tammy, the admin assistant, then takes every single one of those old forms. She has to manually calculate the hours, turn it into a, then she types it into a payroll system, matches it up to their handwritten PTO sheets, request for time off sheets. So there's a lot of room, and she does a great job, so I'm not saying, you know, that there are errors made, but that allows for a lot of room for errors to be made. Then when it gets to our office, we do the best we can to check all of those items again on paper, check the time sheet, check the PTO sheet, make sure it flows through the system correctly, because the system we're using was manually coded here in town, and it works 90% of the time. But sometimes there are instances where, you know, it just doesn't flow through the system correctly. So there are, it's just, the system itself isn't, again, it was free, you know, it was written, it's been used, but it is sunsetting, and so we need to find a different solution. And it's very difficult to find a solution that will allow for all of the different rules we have to account for. Like the fire department, they're on the Kelly schedule, so they're 212 hours in a 28-day period. Then you go to the police department, they're 84 hours in a two-week time period. Then you have your civilian employees that are, you know, your traditional 40-hour-a-week. And to find a system that can incorporate all those rules is very difficult. We earn comp time. Many systems won't factor in comp time, they just only do overtime. So we met with a bunch of different companies, some were able to do those rules, a lot of them aren't able to do the rules. I don't know, just a little background for us more specifically.
Well, also making sure we're keeping in compliance with the United State Department of Accounts, too.
Right, right.
Yeah. So out of the proposals we have, Paycom was pretty much the only one that checked all our boxes as far as the fire department shifts, PD shifts, and like Beth said, comp time and everything else calculated and kept on record. And just to add on, once it leaves Tammy's office, it also comes back to where we're checking time cards against what you guys have, what Tammy has, and it's a three-check system that's just time-consuming.
And nothing's in real time. So if something is caught, let's say there was an error and the employee gets their payroll advice, there was an error, we're not able to go back and correct it until the next pay cycle. So this would allow for some of that, you know, to not happen so much.
It also helps the employee can see in real time when they do a PTO request, and then maybe, oh, I said it was sit time and I meant comp time. They can actually change it right away in real time and get it to their department head that can review it and approve it and say, yes, that's right before you've just the timekeeping portion for their payroll. So it helps just streamline everything from the employee to the department head who's looking at it, essentially. That's the core of it, is what we're looking at doing. And then you don't have to have internal audits with two different times in the system, plus other people involved in it. Like Billy said, there's like usually three or four of us that are triple-checking, double-checking, and save employees and the department head a lot of time and a lot of...
We did meet with all department heads. They were all, they all liked the program, they were able to ask direct questions on how they would utilize the system. One thing I know you were asking about, how would they clock in? I mean, Public Works has opted to have a manual, like, clock-in machine. They don't want them to do it on the phone, which is fine, like, that department's able to do that. Our department, again, could come in and clock in right from the computer. So it's, each department kind of has that flexibility, or department head has the flexibility to decide how they want it to work within their own department, which is a nice option as well.
And also, speaking of Tammy, I don't wanna pick on Tammy, but you guys have the time card system that's the oldest. When the employees do clock in, it says, Tammy, I'm gonna take all those time cards and manually add them up, and then chase after them and say, hey, what happened here? Or, oh, you missed a punch, or this or that, and have to sign on it. The system flows through and calculates all that. So all essentially that the department head would be doing is making sure that it lines up to whatever their employee's worked in their PTO and submitting it.
And also the, just to jump on that, the system could also be set up to where, if it's not a planned time off, and you're in the vicinity of your GeoNet, so to speak, you do get a reminder that says, hey, you forgot to, you know, punch-in time is coming up, don't forget to punch in, you know? So there's different safeguards against that to where, as opposed to a person not hitting a card, you're getting a notification that you forgot to punch in this morning, or you started talking to your foreman or your supervisor and didn't do that, it shoots you a reminder also.
Another thing that I think they just briefly touched on was employee onboarding. So that brings it back to the employee to file out all of the proper paperwork and not forget to bring one back in whenever they're submitting their packet back to the payroll administration department. It has it all there, or it'll remind them, hey, you forgot to sign your I-9 form, or you missed giving us your phone number, email, whatever it may be. It's all in the computer, they have it all at the access, and they can submit it, and it goes straight to where it needs to go. For us to have a complete, accurate employee file and not chasing people down, trying to make sure they sign something or check it off.
It also allows for a checklist on more of like the employer side. So onboarding is a good example. When somebody is getting onboarded, there are a lot of people that are involved within that. You can have a streamlined checklist to make sure that, this is just an example, but that IT sets them up with an email, you know, operations gets them a badge, somebody takes a picture with Bill on their first day, so that everyone completes their necessary task in order to, so when it is that employee's first day, everything has been completed and signed off on.
And just full disclosure, I've used this system before. One of my employers used Paycom. And it's very easy, and you could go in there and get W-2s from years past, it's very accessible. So yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of good to make things more technology, I mean...
We did run this program. We brought it and asked IT, and we got positive feedback from IT as well, just from their standpoint. I wanted to make sure that, you know, they look at things differently than we look at it sometimes, so we did get the thumbs up from IT as well.
I have some higher, maybe higher-level questions?
Please, of course.
But anyway, so what format is the information stored on? It is a proprietary, so we can have it when we decide that we wanna go a different direction.
Well, that will never happen. But it's stored in our data centers. We have, we're backed up four different times concurrently. We have data centers across the United States. We've never been hacked. We have the Tier IV data center. We're one of only three tiered IV data centers in the United States. So we take your data sensitivity very seriously. But our theory is that it's your data, so we're housing it, but if and when you all, you know, wanted to leave, it is your data. So you're able to pull all of that data and take it for, you know, your own safekeeping. Even when you are a client, you're able to download any documents that have been signed off on, any, you know, time and attendance files. It is solely your data.
Okay. And then, so it talked about a backup of personnel files. Is the personnel file something that the department heads then can access for the information?
Yeah, absolutely. And what we can do is, we have like security controls where maybe you want the department heads to have, like, some of those personnel files or information, but maybe you don't want them to see like their social or their date of birth. We can get really granular to ensure they only have access and visibility and controls over what they should.
Well, that's another good point to touch on, and you guys are up to date with all of the HR rules and laws as well. So there are certain things that aren't going to be allowed to be viewed by people that aren't allowed to be viewed.
Correct, yep, yep, absolutely.
Right, but a department head should be able to view the personnel file on a certain person whenever he desires or...
Yeah. Within the, like, the standards, absolutely, they'll be able to do that. And again, they'll be able to do it right from their phone, they could pick up somebody on their team, see their phone number, text them right through there.
Right, I mean, because we do have to be compliant with the law and the Personal Policy Manual, but this system will allow them to see the things that they're allowed to see. There are certain things that are not allowed to be, but what is in this system is really, they can come in and...
Okay, and then how will this communicate, like, with other usage and information from other departments, like for paying bills, or for record storage and things like that?
So we'll, and I'm blanking on your accounting software.
This has, this does not, this does not incorporate paying the bill.
Yeah. It's a separate system from that. What we would provide is like a feed into your accounting software for general ledger purposes, and that's where the communication would take place. But we wouldn't, there's really no reason for us to have any sort of connection with, like, your billing platform or anything of that nature.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Any other questions from anyone? I was just gonna ask, like, if there is a discrepancy, how do you resolve that?
I guess it would depend on the type of discrepancy. Would the example be like...
Hey, somebody's pay.
Somebody's pay?
Yeah.
Well, we would go back, everything within our system is completely auditable, so we would be able to see what the employee put in, what the manager potentially put in, any of those changes that would be into effect, so that, again, from a compliance perspective, you have that auditability. And then if there was, for whatever reason, if an employee did get paid incorrectly, or they miss a pay, we would be able to, we would provide you guys with check stock, and you would be able to cut them a manual check right there for the employee to get paid.
And have you ever had glitches?
No, we've never had a, you can fact-check people, we've never had any downtime within our system. We've never, again, we've never been hacked. From a glitch perspective, the biggest glitch we would see is if you don't have internet access, or you don't have any cellular data, so that you can't access it, but we've had 100% uptime as an organization.
But even on that, you can record a punch when you don't have cellular access and you don't have Wi-Fi, and then it'll upload once you get to that point where you have Wi-Fi. So you can still put information into the system.
And Mr. Billy, like, are most of the department heads kind of like familiar, or do they think?
So, yeah, so like Harlan and Julia said, they met with everyone on a one-on-one, gave them their issues that they're having in each department, and their answers were satisfactory to them.
And I know it was touched on, and sorry to interrupt, but the way you all operate is, there's so many differences and intricacies and uniqueness between your different departments, so it is challenging for, you know, many organizations to be able to fit those different molds. And I think that's in large part why there is a good fit with Paycom here, because we are able to tailor the setup and the rules and the structure based on those different intricacies that, you know, makes Public Works different from police and fire and so on and so forth.
And are you working in any local municipalities currently?
We work with, it's tough to pull client data because we're very sensitive about sharing with it. We do work with hundreds of municipalities across the country. We work with some within Indiana as well. One I can share is City of Auburn, is a city that we work with. I can look to pull in addition a list, but municipality is a vertical. I've worked with, actually prior to this role, worked in our Minnesota office, and I worked with quite a number of different cities and counties there as well. So we are very well-versed within the municipality space.
He had provided me a list of municipalities that they've worked with, and I checked and verified, and there were no, any complaints.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Paycom, Julia and Harlan.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the time and interest and questions.
Thank you.
Great to meet you guys.
As well. Item C, Gates Park Improvement Bid.
So the Park Board authorized Robinson Engineering to go out to bid for...
So the park board authorized Robinson Engineering to go out to bid for the improvements at the Gates Park. Dave Schilling from Robinson is here to make that presentation.
Thank you, Dave Schilling, Robinson Engineering. We did prepare a scope of work and an exhibit showing four phases of the park. The park board did authorize us to go to bid on Phase Two for construction, starting in the midsummer. That consists of the four sets, so eight total pickleball courts. There is the metal shade structure that you see in the lower right-hand corner of the exhibit that has picnic benches. Between the courts, there will be a light in between the playground and the pickleball courts for security lighting with some future conduit for a next phase of full sports lighting so that can be played at night. There will be four benches, new benches around the playground with fabric roofed shade structures and the same thing with the skate park, a couple benches with the skate, with the shade structures as you see in the middle there. And finally, there'll be lighting at the skate park. And this will be Phase Two constructed in 2024.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. On Phase One, so there's already a walking path on the opposite side. This is going to go around the other side?
Correct, to make a recreational.
Okay, cool, nice.
And that's, we're still waiting for the contractor to get their insurance in order, but we're expecting a pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks to get going on that one.
No other questions? I think we're good, Dave. Thank you.
Yep, we're already working on it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Item D, decision, discussion of new VAC truck upgrades. Bob?
Yes. I'm Bob Veloz with Public Works Department, Water, Waste, Water Foreman. I was looking at the specs. These were written for this truck last year. I went through the specs early January, met with some of our staff, also spoke to the salespeople. There are some add-ons I'd like to add to our VAC truck since it is at chassis form right now, which means it's bare. So now is the time to do it. Reasoning for my add-ons are the dual-stage fan system in lieu of a single-stage is, a single-stage only gives you approximately 15 feet suction, vertical suction. The dual-stage will give us up over to 30 feet or more. We have wet wells out there, our sanitary lift stations, we have wet wells that are 30-plus feet deep. So the single-stage would have never worked.
Okay.
That's your highest priced item. The rest of it is lighting. It was only coming with two lights, work lights. We need more lighting than that. Toolboxes, if there's any questions, I mean, I have no problems justifying any of these add-ons if you guys have any questions.
So compared, Mike and the rest of the council, Mr. President and the rest of the council, the vehicle that was purchased was your bare bones. It didn't take into consideration safety of the workers when they're out there at night, the remote control for the, the control of the boom that takes away workman's comp issues where someone's not struggling to move this hose around. So that, that remote, everything that's here is something that should have been put on, in my opinion, when the original build was taken out. Bob brought it to our attention and I don't see anything on here that is not necessary on the truck.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Billy. To me, it looks pretty straightforward.
So my only question would be where, how are we going to pay for this?
So the add-ons came out to about 50.
Fifty thousand?
Two hundred and twenty-one dollars. We do have our old, our old VAC truck. We did have it appraised for a trade-in. It's right around $20,000. So out of the 30, it'll be the same breakdown that we're paying for, for the new truck, water, sewer and stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Pretty straightforward.
No problem, thank you.
Item E, Service Weapon Application for retirees. Our attorney, Mr. Fettinoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Traditionally, within the town of St. John, when an officer retires, they put in a service weapon application to the town council for review and approval regarding them keeping their weapon. When they're going to keep their weapon when they retire, they sign off on a general release and waiver indemnifying the town if anything should happen with the service weapon itself. But it's been tradition here for a long time that that's the way it was handled. My recommendation is regarding the, the approval of the general release and waiver, I don't know necessarily if it needs to be come before the town council each time. I think it'd be better well handled by the town manager on a case-by-case basis. Usually it's been for pomp and circumstance that this is brought before the town council, but you have the right to delegate if you choose to do so to give the town manager the opportunity to go ahead and sign off on the general release and waiver and turn over the firearm. So we do have one up for consideration right now. That's Officer Demeter. He's retiring and that's the one before you right now. But my recommendation would be any further, further ones that come before the, the town, it'd just be handled by the town manager versus the entire town council at a pomp and circumstance meeting.
So just kind of removing some of the bureaucracy of the?
Streamlining, just like Paycom's doing.
Right.
I'm trying to streamline our, our operations as well, so.
Understand that. I can appreciate the streamlining effect and having the town manager take on some of those responsibilities and easing the burden from the town council. But kind of like you mentioned, the pomp and circumstance, I would still like the ability to vote on that as a town council, thank the officer for his years of service, have a photo taken. I think the pomp and circumstance is important, important for the personnel and I think important for the town as well. So I, I would like to see the ordinance kind of stay the way it is right now for that reason. So just my opinion.
I kind of agree with you, Jerry. Can we leave it up to that particular person that's retiring, how they would want to do it? Do they, I mean, because that is kind of nice when they're retiring, I think, to acknowledge them and.
I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not an issue with, if Deputy Chief Demeter was retiring today, that that paperwork was already done and he comes in and Jerry hands him that and you hand him his retirement shield and we want to present it to him like that? I think it was, again, just to streamline it and not have, you know, an extra thing.
The way I understand it was we still would, could, still would and could have the pomp and.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can have a party, you can have a cake, you can do whatever you want in terms of turning over the shield and going from that route. What I'm talking about more is the processing of the paperwork having to do with the general release and waiver and giving the officer a service weapon.
So I think that if we gave that to the town manager and then, you know, we can still celebrate the officer, which I'm sure we would all want to do that, no question in my mind. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Fettinoff.
Thank you.
Item F, Fire Department Vacation Update, Ordinance 1819 Vacation Policy.
So this is up for second reading at our next council meeting. Ordinance 1819 is just reestablishing what was in Ordinance 1774. That brought the fire department up to par, sorry, my mic was on, with the, with the civilian staff. It was inadvertently changed when the personnel policy was updated. The policy that we were working off of didn't have that in there. It wasn't updated. So we're just looking to change that back.
I understand that. Any other questions or comments on that? Thank you, Mr. Billy. Or you did G with Big Tilly. Item H, Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement.
This is just a, your basic conflict of interest statement from CLIF. Obviously it states that WBKL Communications. It's the same contract that worked that has the purchase of business communication equipment, phones, networks, switches, servers, websites, hosting and design and support.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you. I, item I, stale dated checked, checks, stale dated checked or checks?
It should be checks.
Okay.
So this will be a resolution that will be before you next week and it is to void stale dated checks that are outstanding and unpaid for a period of two or more years. This is as required by Indiana Code 511, 10.5, Sections 3 and 4. The total amount of stale data checks that you will be considering is $979.95 and you have received in Exhibit A, a list of same.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Going on to Item J, St. John EMS Uncollectible Account Summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what you guys have, we will do this every six months, is a list of uncollectibles from the ambulance billing. Basically what that is, that's like Medicare, Medicaid patients, they just pay a flat fee. So whatever's left on the bill, we legally cannot go back and charge a patient for. If they file bankruptcy, obviously we can't go towards them or they file bankruptcy, some of them in there, it says not worth going after, they owe like 60 bucks. It's going to cost us more legal fees to go after them and stuff. So that's just a list of write-offs that we have. We do that every six months and we give it to you guys for approval and I believe there has to be a resolution on that.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Adams.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? With that, we'll move to Item K, DSBC, Emergency Servicing Insurance Reimbursement. Mr. Adams again.
All right, thank you. So what I want to bring to you guys, this is a company, it's an outside company that does billing for more of the fire service. We do bill for the ambulance service, but there is no billing for the fire side of it. What this would be, this would have to run to the volunteer side of the fire department, to the St. John Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated. State statute, it has to involve a volunteer fire department. So what they do is we would bill the insurance companies. So we get called to a structured fire. Everybody has on their homeowners insurance. You'll see on the bottom it says local fee for a fire department. That's what gets them paid. And that just helps us recoup some of the costs for going to the scene. If we do damage our hose or gear, we can add that in there. And then this company would go with the insurance companies, work with them and try to give us reimbursement for some stuff. So that way we're not always buying hose if it gets cut or damaged or burned or the guy's gears get them damaged. Same thing with the car accident. If we do extrication, if we do oil dry, then we would fill out a form, submit to this company and they deal with the insurance companies. So if you see in your forms, there's a slot that we would fill out as far as what we would want billed and we would just do insurance only so that way we would not bill any resident, any homeowner, any of the drivers. It would just be insurance only. If they didn't have insurance, then they closed the case, they just close it out. So it would be no money to the residents or anything, it would just be with the insurance companies.
Very good. Who pays, who pays for the service?
So they, like on a structured fire, they'll take 10 per cent. So they take a certain percentage of what they collect. That's how we pay, that's how they get paid.
Whatever the claim is, they're getting?
Right, they're getting a certain percentage of it. So there's no money to sign the contract with and stuff.
Shane, if, if, if the resident doesn't have this specific line of insurance, we're not looking to go after them?
Correct. Right. Yes, that is correct.
Only their policy as, as a center?
Right. Yep.
And there are other towns that do this?
Yes. So you got Crown Point does it, Maryville, Chesterton, Lake Hills does it. So yeah, there's other agencies that do it. I know Sherwood was trying to do it, but they don't have a volunteer side, so they couldn't do it. Town of Cedar Lake does bill for it, but they do their own, which I heard is a headache and they're trying to handle it themselves. And so they haven't a company do it. So there's other fire departments out there that do do the billing for it.
Okay.
So ultimately, this is just a way for us to recoup some money that normally the town would be paying.
Right. Correct.
Would you treat that money when they get it, it has to be put back in the general fund, correct? Well, the fire department's going to claim that it should be put back in their fund. Just, just one thing I think everybody should know is that when the, when, when, when the event happens where we recoup money, the town recoups money, that money's not going to go to the fire department budget as a line item. It's going to go back into the general fund through the town, through the, through the clerk's office as a, as an amount reimbursed.
Right.
Just to let everybody know. Because sometimes when I deal in Maryville, the police or the fire want special monies dedicated to their own fund. Under Indiana law, it depends on what the fund is, but you can't, you can't guide the money toward the fire department or the police department. You have to gear it toward the town's general fund.
Correct. Yeah, the general fund is one fund with each department being its own pocket essentially. So when we would receive any of this money back, it would be receipted back to the general fund. But you could technically say that it's an offset to fire department expenses because you would be the one generating that receipt.
Okay.
It just wouldn't go back, go into your budget per se.
Okay.
It's similar to building permits and the building and planning department. They're, you know, they're, that permit initiates the fee, but it gets receipted into the general fund, not back to the building and planning department.
I'm just bringing up conversation because there's a misnomer sometimes on where the money goes back to.
Right. And then it's a process. Obviously if you guys lost a hose or something, went back to the general fund and you came to the town, obviously, yeah.
Right.
Right. I mean, they already have a budget set. So if they go over their budget, then they would potentially come to the town council and ask for an additional appropriation.
So do they have more of a formal contract that they're going to present to your organization?
Right. Right, so there'd be a contract that you would sign?
Well, and the reason why I say that is because usually when we're billing, we don't necessarily provide a service provider a percent of recovery. So that's going to need that for her records when State Board of Account comes in to explain where 10%, if we recover 60 and 10% goes to EBSC.
Right.
Why will we have 54 and where'd the 10% go? So.
Okay.
And then Shane, also, it's not a question that I need answered right now, but if you can check with them also to see once they, they do put in a, a claim against residents, what, what does that do to their insurance? Obviously if it's a total loss, their insurance is going to be affected regardless, but could we see if that, that line item in there has affected anything or if they have any, any kind of numbers on that?
Okay. Yep, I can look into it. I mean, from the past, just so you guys kind of know, I mean, we've had, you know, when this was Lake Hills, we did file like a claim, they had a small little fire. And so we submitted them a claim. So this company went and said, hey, we're going to submit with your insurance. Well, the homeowner said, no. Well, the homeowner said, no, I'm not filing it with my insurance. I don't want to put that claim against it and have my rates go up. They're like, I can fix the damage by myself. So they just fixed the damage themselves. It was a small fire. They never filed a claim with their insurance. So then this company just said they closed it out.
Okay. So they give the option to the homeowner if they're going to, if they want to file through the insurance?
Right.
Okay. That's a little bit better because, you know, if they just decided willing or nearly to go ahead and file the claim, then potentially the homeowner, their insurance rate would be going up.
Right.
Potentially astronomically.
Right. So unless that homeowner actually files a claim saying, hey, I had a structured fire, and I'm filing a claim to get my house fixed, that would be the only way we would get paid on it. If they say, hey, I'm not filing a claim, then we get nothing. The company would close it out.
You know what? I do have a question. Did you say this would operate through the volunteer side?
Yes.
So maybe we wouldn't probably not receive anything in then? Would the money go directly to the volunteer department?
The way the state laws run up, and I can talk to you, go into a little bit more, we can kind of work it out. So this has to involve, the way the state statutes run up, it has to involve a volunteer Fire Department also. So like the town of Sherwood can't do it because they have no volunteers. They're strictly career. It's just the way the state laws run up. So if you want, I can meet with you, and we can talk about that as far as how we work that out and stuff.
Like they just have to be affiliated with it, but it would still be town-initiated, or I guess... Okay.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Item L, Discussion of Janitorial Cleaning Service Proposals.
So in front of you, you have a packet with a company that we are very interested in signing on with. It gives a scope of their work, what they would do in each, in each building. The cost for the year would be right around $28,000. Up until now, we have been using Public Works employees as they become free. But I can tell you during the month of January, when we were out plowing, salting a couple main breaks, there was times where we weren't able to clean, you know, our facilities on a regular basis. So I'd like for this to, for you to review this and hopefully approve it at the next meeting to where we have this company come in. We did receive four or five proposals. This one was, checked all our boxes and was the, our lowest cost. We have added another employee at PW, but I think the number is right at 17. So if you have, if you have, you know, a call out or a couple, couple different main breaks going on, which we have had, that's more important.
Wouldn't this just take the place of the employee who was the janitor before, though, essentially? Less than the cost of the employee?
No, no, it's, it's way less than the cost of another employee, you know, hiring someone just to do that, or the employee that was doing it. But just the, him not being able to be here on a consistent basis.
Right, but this isn't an add-on. This is just a different method, is what I'm getting at. This isn't, you're not adding on a contract. It's replacing an employee, essentially.
It's replacing an employee, so what you have to look at is not only salary, but then the benefit package you pay that employee.
Yeah, you're right on that. Thank you.
Right. Any questions, comments, anyone? Thank you, Mr. Billy. Item M, CDWG Third-Party Cloud Services, Google Software Migration.
So after sitting with Cliff and going over some of the issues that we were having with our email and various other IT issues, I asked Cliff about moving everything over to one space. This will replace the Google workspace for government. This will replace our emails, calendars, document sharing for the entire town staff. This will replace our third service through Microsoft for the same features. This will be lower than Microsoft by about $6,000 annually for the same service. There might be a couple months of overlap during the transition. But we'd like to get this going and moving before the contract's up in the fall.
And this would be a cost savings, and it's cheaper than...
So like I said, you may have a couple months where it overlaps, but yes, annually, it'd be about $6,000, or $6,000 a year cheaper.
Okay.
There is a one-time fee of $12,500. This is for the transfer all emails, calendars, documents from Microsoft to Google. This will, this will migrate all our emails, our calendars, as well as setting up domains and servers for new Google servers. This will put all town users on the same domain. Currently, we have mixed users. We have 60% of us are on stjohn.com. The other 40% of us are on .gov. Makes it difficult sometimes to send emails. I get them sometimes rejected back. So we'd like to get the uniform there also. And again, the savings, once everything's brought over, in the long run, will pay for itself.
And not only that, but several departments, like I know the Police Department, Building and Planning, and my department, we also carry a Gmail, a separate Gmail, so that we can do scheduling. And we do various different, like Excel-type spreadsheets that we work on collaboratively. So we're, we're carrying two different emails, which can sometimes be a pain.
I'm kind of confused. Like, why do we have two?
Because Microsoft doesn't allow for the collaboration like Google does. So you can be in a Google spreadsheet, their version of Excel, and I could be working in it, and Shane could be working in it, and we can both see in real time what each other, what we're doing. So a lot of our accounting spreadsheets are through that system, just because that's what my office uses, that's what the PD uses. And Planning has kind of migrated to it as well. Because it's, the Drive, Google Drive, offers so many different options that are included in their service that makes our workflow easier and in real time. And we can collaborate through it, just right through that system. So for example, an RTP, if you guys do a request to purchase, you approve it. I log it into the spreadsheet. Amy over at PD, as I'm logging it in, she can see it. She can track, you know, how much has been spent on it, you know. It's just different, different things that we, we do with it. So we've been carrying two email addresses, at least since I've been here for eight years. And then, like Billy mentioned, on the Microsoft side, some of you are .com, some of you are .gov. So Ann actually had this issue. You're .gov.
Yes.
But Ann is .com. So I was trying to send emails, and I just assumed she was .gov, and then everything's getting kicked back, and Ann never received the emails. I know Jerry's .com. Christian, I think, is .gov. Wayne is .com. That's a lot for somebody to remember who's what when you're sending an email.
And that's confusing because when I was talking to the residents yesterday, they, they brought that up. And they said, well, and they were asking, I didn't, I didn't have an answer. I don't, I don't know. I thought everything was .gov. So, okay. Hopefully, that'll simplify, again, streamline, and make it less cumbersome for everyone. And we're going to save money. Any other questions or comments?
No, and kind of piggybacking on everyone's streamlining, we're also looking at, at other, other upgrades to bring the town up to, up to par. And as that information comes available, we'll present it to the council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Billy. So just, so I'm looking at this quote confirmation. It's got $19,998 three times. Are we doing three of those, or is that just...
Cliff said that we would save money by doing a three-year contract, which is consistent to the Microsoft was in a three-year contract, so...
So it's three, three, it's three-year, one-year agreements?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, everyone. Item Five, Augmentation. Any other questions, any comments, or...